Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30, so I'm gonna call the Etomo City Council meeting to order. If everybody would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris, take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway, here. Councilmember Hoffman, here. Councilmember McIntyre, there. Councilmember Cavanaugh, Councilmember Reed, here. Mayor Johnson, here.
The next item is to approve the consent agenda part one of tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Chris, take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes.
The next item is to approve consent agenda part two. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Chris, take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, no.
The next item is to approve our agenda for tonight's council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second. Chris, take the roll.
Councilmember Galloway, yes. Councilmember Hoffman, yes. Councilmember McIntyre, yes. Councilmember Reed, yes.
The next item is city administrators' report to council citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil Ratt, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing on the agenda that I have on my agenda tonight is a, we'll call it a community spotlight. We had requests from the report about Gateway Student Project, and they want to address or they're dealing with the issue of chronic absenteeism. And so we've got members from Gateway here that are going to come up and introduce themselves. And I've got some other classmates in support, so I'll let you all introduce yourselves and do your presentation.
Don't be nervous. We don't bite.
Good afternoon, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Fine. How are you?
I'm Javier, and this is Lola, and I'm with Cadence. Thank you for letting us, thank you for letting us take a little bit of your time today.
Our project, our project is a student-driven project. Our goal is to help reduce chronic absenteeism. The process we had is we collected data from the adults and the students, which many of you did. And the solutions are through policy mindset changes and collaboration. Results are student-desired learning skills. Our students desire learning skills more than a total grant. We have a grant from the state of Iowa to fund our projects.
How much is your grant?
Three thousand three. Iowa law defines chronic absenteeism as missing more than 10% of school dates in a grading period. This means that even if the absences are excused, if a student misses more than 10% of the school year, they are chronically absent. The state of Iowa is changing some coding, but our focus is on getting kids who could be at school to school more.
Some projects we've done so far is we've learned a lot about chronic absenteeism recently. We've shared information about Gateway and connected with others from the community at the CASA conference. We've also collected data from the community to get other opinions and ideas. We've had a total of 41 responders so far. We also analyzed our own schools' attendance data.
The stakeholders for responsibility rating varies, but families appear to hold the most responsibility, while the local government is seen to hold the least responsibility. Majority of adults didn't skip school during their educational years, so we can assume their schooling isn't as prioritized as it used to be. Our district's attendance rates are so close to 100%, with OHS and GHS not far behind. Even though the scores seem high, that's still a lot of students missing school and a large gap to fix.
Some solutions we found that could help chronic absenteeism is transportation assistance, mentorship, and relationship building. Job-related opportunities, community opportunities, and involvement, school-engaging opportunities, mental health services, and community collaboration.
Why are we here? We are here to ask you to share the survey with the entire community on your social platforms. This will allow us to gather data from more of a diverse group. The survey results illustrate that chronic absenteeism is more of a community-wide issue than an individual figure. Addressing it will likely require empathy, solid planning, and targeted support systems. The following slides are data from our survey. We aren't going to read them because we don't want to take up too much of our time, your time, but you can look through them. Thank you.
Do you think the brain health rule at the high school has done anything to help with reducing any absenteeism at the high school?
I do think it does help in certain cases, but it doesn't initially drive students to want to come to school more.
And then the other question I had, the grant that you got, is there any measurables that you have to deliver on? Or was it just a grant to study and just get information?
I believe we had some, like, projects we were doing that is going towards, so we just, like, added all of that, I believe.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does council have any questions for any of these students?
I have a comment. What I'd like to say is, I appreciate you guys so much. I know how hard it is to get up there. And you guys did a fantastic job. You're even able to answer questions. That's impressive. A lot of people don't get to. And everybody was in the sound of my voice, and we're being recorded. These young people see the problem, and they're attacking it. You're doing more than the adults. So my heart goes out to you. I appreciate it. Keep working on it. Fantastic job, and I am here for anything you need.
Thank you. And then I just have a few comments. So for the community, please watch our Facebook page. Travis will get that posted once we receive the link from the youth. There's also some survey data over by the agendas. If you, if we run out of it, then please email me my information. You'll be found on the website because I will get you that data if you would like to see it. And then my last comment is, I am beyond impressed with you all, and I have told you this multiple times, but I want the community to know. I have worked with the youth that attend Gateway High School on multiple occasions, and every time I leave more impressed and more excited about the future. We often hear, "Youth are the future," but we were at a conference recently that said youth are actually our leaders now and our future leaders, and that is so true. And you all are truly the embodiment of that. You are leaders today. You are leaders tomorrow, and I'm just getting goosebumps. So thank you for everything you have done, and I look forward to everything you will do.
Because some of us are virtual, we're really young.
Thank you again for your presentation. It will be part of the video when we get that posted, usually the next day, maybe tomorrow. And so if anyone wanted to go through and see some of the slides that went through your data quickly, you'll be able to start to step through some of those things. So look for that, as well as the survey link, and go out and take that. Thank you.
If you give permission, we can post for slides to you if you would like. We all can leave too, if you want, or you can stay around and see the rest.
Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And with that, I'm gonna call up Mark Rowe. It's a fun act to follow there.
See, you got big shoes to fill.
He'll have an update for us on what Greater Etomo Partners in Progress has been doing, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks for that. Mayor, council, and you, Marvin. So as usual, we will go over really quick. I put a jacket on, so I've got 17 minutes. So we'll talk about the community as a whole really quick, and then we'll quickly touch on what GOPIP is doing currently. So looking at 2024 calendar year, we had a net increase for the third year in a row for businesses. This last year was just a little bit slower than the last two years, but still we ended up net positive in businesses. Most of that was in, four of those were restaurants, and then the others were kind of scattered between healthcare, retail, and grocery. I decided to go ahead and add this because I believe that looking into the future of the city of Etomo, I think this is gonna be a topic that we're gonna want to talk about, and this really relates back to the 2022 housing study that the city of Etomo conducted. And what this is, is the real estate climate here in Etomo and Wablo County, and I think that this is really important for us to look at. That way we get a really good holistic picture of what the real estate market and the economy is doing in Etomo. So I don't want to read this verbatim to you, but I will tell you, this is a little bit worrisome for us, and I think that this is indicative of what we've always known in this city of Etomo. Eighty-seven percent of our housing stock was built before 1979. Average home price is about $88,000 in Etomo. Obviously, some of these houses are selling at much higher than that, which is breaking that average up to $135,000. You'll see that that is down. Those are compared to last year's number. We are down 3.6%. It's important to note that right now we're getting about 96% of ask price on the final sale of homes. So that 135,000 means that we're getting roughly around 140, 142 on original ask price. And where that is a little bit of a concern for our market is our neighboring counties are faring much better than that, which really leads to bringing back the pieces of the puzzle to say, we have an aging housing stock here in Etomo, and that's gonna be something that's gonna have to be addressed here sooner rather than later. Now, on the plus side, we do have a lot of listings going on and off the market. Our sales rate is good, and the median days on the market is bouncing anywhere between 10 days and 35 days. So we're keeping houses, we're churning them quickly, but we also have a little bit of, we'll say, unfair competition. We have people that really are looking for a higher value of home, but they're settling for something less, and that's really choking out the people who are struggling to get into a home. So this is something to look at over the coming months as we continue to have the conversation about housing. And looking at part of the reason that we need to continue the conversation about housing, I know that this has been talked about in years past, but I really wanted to get this in front of your faces now because this, 2024 was actually a good year for us. We had five new home builds, but as you can see, the net condemnations and the net houses raised far outpace the new houses that were built. And of those new home build permits, two of them were done by governmental entities, Dean Hills Community College and Etomo Community School District. One was done by a nonprofit, River Water. So two privates, if we want to really break that down for the course of the year. So we're slipping backwards. Again, 2024 was actually a good year. 2023 looks far worse than what this looks. So again, just to know that we're gonna be presenting these more often. And just so you're aware, as council people, what those data points actually look like. Workforce, another area of interest, we're holding steady at about 4.1% unemployment rate, which is roughly just a little bit ahead of the US average. We're significantly ahead of the Iowa average, which is a little bit of a concern for us. Same goes, and I prefer to look at the labor participation rate as opposed to the unemployment rate because it gives you a little bit clearer of a picture. We're tracking pretty much on par with the US labor participation rate, but again, we are looking not so great against the Iowa average. There are certain counties in the state of Iowa, if we look at comparable counties like Marshall County, for example, we're pacing pretty much right on par with them, but as you break out into the other rural areas, we're struggling just a little bit. And here is the weeks of unemployment for, and I know that that's really hard to see, I apologize. The weeks of unemployment claims by occupational group and by industry. And obviously, you're seeing construction trends in there with a lot of weeks worth of claims, and that makes sense. This is not seasonally adjusted data, so you're gonna see the, over the course of the winter, the construction trades go up. But what's concerning about this is in the manufacturing. That manufacturing has leaked over the last 12 months. We've seen a lot of layoffs recently in some of the local facilities, and that's really pushing that number pretty far. So any questions on that before I move on? Okay, so our report for what we've been doing over the past few months. First of all, we'll talk about retail strategies. Everybody knows at this point that Jersey Mike says coming to 1255 Theater Drive here in Etomo. We expect that in the summer, in the summer months, which is perfect for Subway sandwiches, I guess. And we are looking at a development with another quick-service retailer that may be here this year more than likely. It'll be into 2026 if that materializes. And then I don't know if Phil wants to touch on this, but this was quite a conversation during the last presentation, Quincy Place Mall. We did have an extensive conversation with retail strategies very recently about reopening the communication lines with them. They have completely, the owner of the mall has completely cut off communications with anybody revolving around the city of Etomo at this point. I have, I have an assumption he's angry because there has been public press about his property, and there was a city demand for repair on that, and that time has lapsed at this point up. If you wanted to touch on that real quick, or we just kind of wait till the end?
We can wait till the end.
Okay. So we are engaging with another site selector as we speak for another business district here in Etomo. So more to come on that. And then one of the core tenants of GOPIP has always been advocacy, so I wanted to spend just a couple of minutes talking about that because I believe that we're coming to a very timely place with elections coming up. I wish we could have gotten to this before the last election, but we're coming up on midterm election, which there's usually a little bit more voter apathy at that point, so hopefully we can get ahead of it for this cycle. We did create a brand-new section on our website specifically designed for voter information. And I believe that we've covered all bases at this point. This is registration for votes, or for voters, precinct places, connecting with our legislators, both folks like you and the state national legislators. There's military and absentee voting on there, so we believe that that is fairly, fairly full at this point. We do have a part two that's going to be coming. I'll be coming to the council again later, probably July and August, to talk about what part two of those local election advocacy efforts are going to look like. And then just to bring up, we have spent a lot of time in Des Moines in the last couple of months doing advocacy work, both from the Iowa Association of Business and Industry and the Iowa Association of Chambers of Commerce and local days on Mid Hill. Pelgerson Flats, I think I've said this name way too many times over the past few years, but I do want to just say that we have made significant progress on that over the last couple of months. We have reaffirmed our future partnerships with Alliant Energy. That's been, that's been a little tricky, mainly because we're trying to get partnerships rounded up with them. At the same time, ITC Midwest and Alliant Energy are doing their long-term planning for the city of Etomo in southeast Iowa. So we're coming in to talk to them while they're, while they're trying to do their own thing. So we have created some future partnerships with them, and there has been movement on the future land use with that. Mayor and I had a conversation about that right before the meeting. And then we, this really is all based on us changing the way that, over the last year or two, the way that we have been presenting this property out in the world. We stopped basing it on what we wanted in the community, and we started looking at the property for what the community assets have to provide. So again, this is going back to the beginning of the presentation. We know what we have as a community. Let's not try to, let's not try to work for things that are unattainable for us. So again, significant progress on that property. We do have future site efforts that we're looking at past Pelgerson Flats at this point, so hopefully there's more to come in the coming months on that. And then I wanted to touch on 312 East Alta Vista really quick. Like, we have been in constant talks amongst the ownership group on that property. We just last week finished the Phase Two environmental survey of the property, and, which we were able to fund through an Iowa Department of Natural Resources grant. And we, quite honestly, were fearful that we were gonna come back with arsenic or asbestos on the property because the property did sit half-torn down for two years. Best-case scenario, it's a clean bill of health. So we have that Phase Two done. We have the geotechnical report done on the property, so we are ready to start talking about what those next steps for the property might be. And that is obviously going to include infrastructural design and how that's gonna be funded, and then ultimately the marketing of the property, which has been ongoing, I think, for the last year.
Mark, is there gonna be any opportunity for the public to weigh in or have any input on any of that? Does that ring for Alta Vista?
There has been talk of it, yes. I just don't think that we're quite there yet, so I believe that the answer's gonna be yes. Specifically, it would be the immediate properties around it, so. And then looking at what the business engagement has been, in the last year, we've issued, and now we're bouncing to fiscal cycle instead of calendar year, we've issued $14,000 worth of GOPIP bucks back into the community. Our ambassadors have completed 17 ribbon cuttings since July, and we will be conducting, per our contract, our business retention and expansion surveys in the months of May and June this year. And one thing that I'm really excited about, and this is really all to the efforts of our digital media specialist, Jason Bollinger. We have seen monumental growth on all of our platforms. Over the last year, we've seen 20% growth in traffic to our website year over year, 39% over two years. And those top traffic pages, which are exactly the trafficked pages that we want to see that growth in, is our business directory, our available buildings, the events, and then the community news pages. And then the social media, which is where some of this traffic is driving from. We've seen 56% growth in engagement on that year over year. And as far as the contract services, we did complete, hopefully everybody has seen the latest video that was produced for culture and arts in the city of Etomo. If you haven't, please go to the city of Etomo website and check that out. It's really cool. And then we have started an economic development contract with the city of New Sharon, which probably doesn't matter to you guys too much, but we started that back in January.
Well, what is that gonna be? You're gonna be doing economic development with New Sharon?
Yes. It would be basically the exact same thing, except they're a lot further behind than what the city of Etomo is. So it's a little bit more in the weeds. They're creating ordinances and things like that. Event productions that we've had so far this year, obviously, Lean In was March 16th. We had a total attendance in the building of over 200 people. And the Etomo International Film Festival, which I was totally ignorant to, was March 21st, 22nd. It was a cool event. And we did surpass the attendance targets that was originally posed for them. So with that, hopefully I'm under 17 minutes, and if anybody has any questions.
I know you've mentioned the display small, and with council's permission, I'd like to do that at the next meeting, prepare a report back on what says on that.
Any questions for Mark?
I just have a quick question. So regarding that housing kind of outlook that you gave, so I guess you identified that's something we need to address in the future, and I know that we've been addressing it kind of with some of those condemnations. And so when you're talking about, like, future, like, plans or needing to address, what are kind of those top few things that you're thinking off the top of your head?
Well, right out of, right out of the gate, you know, I think that there, to your point, there have been a lot of things that have been done in the past probably four or five years. There have been changes to city ordinance that have, that have brought down the minimum lot size, which has allowed some people to build some of those smaller houses. There was $10,000 per new construction. The Build the Tumble grant that was put into place, that helped just a little bit. So there are some of those things, but really when it comes down to it, especially given the current economic climate and what forecast looks like for the next year, two years, that delta between what it costs to build a property and what it costs to sell a property is going to grow further and further. And, you know, what does that participation look like? You know, we've heard from the state government all along, you know, we need public-private partnerships, and I do believe that to be true. I don't think that if we're looking at East Alta Vista, for example, you know, there's gonna have to be infrastructural work done on that property. And when a developer comes in and they're already $1.5 or $2 million behind on infrastructural work, that's gonna make it really difficult unless they're stacking apartment buildings for as much density as possible, which is not good for the aesthetic of that neighborhood. Unless there's some sort of help and partnership in that, I don't foresee that that's going to be developed. I just, that's just me being realistic. It's not, it's not trying to persuade anybody. It's just, that's the way it is. So that's, that's one thing. There's a group working to, with the one and only Holly Vert leading the charge, of course. We're working to complete a thriving communities designation, which will go a long way to giving workforce tax credits in Etomo. That's something that we've been missing as a community for quite some time. That will help as well. But, and really what it boils down to is we just need to, we need to take advantage of every opportunity that we can. Because again, it's not, it's not low-end housing that we need. It's not workforce housing. It's not mortgage rate housing that we need. It's everything. And we have an additional issue here in Etomo that we do have to deal with, and I think that the quicker that we recognize that, the better off that we as a community are going to be. Our infill space is extremely limited in the city of Etomo. We have at our disposal right now exactly one parcel of property within city limits that is multi-acre that we can develop on. This is an advantage that places like Oskaloosa, Pelop, Pleasant Hill, Des Moines, this is something, all of those, set all of the cash needs aside, that's an advantage that they have that we don't, we don't have infill development space. Do we have several lots in Etomo available? Absolutely, we do. You can get on the city website and just see dozens and dozens of lots that are available. Unfortunately, those lots are 40 feet, 50 feet wide, number one. Number two, it costs anywhere between $150,000 to $250,000 right now to build something on a pad. right now to build something on a pad. And nobody, no developer is going to want to take the risk of developing that on, on a neighborhood where the average price is less than a hundred thousand dollars. They would never, they would never recruit their funds and it would not be a wise investment on their part. So it, it's going to take a multitude of things to address it. And you know, we, we can't just look at the, the market rate housing. We need to look at the workforce housing as well. The workforce housing we have, Atonwa Regional Health Center has an extreme shortage on nursing. They're going to be looking towards that workforce housing. As Atonwa Community School District and Indian Hills try to recruit new instructors, they're going to be looking for that workforce housing. Depending on, depending on what positions that J P S or John Deere are looking to recruit, they're probably going to be looking towards that workforce housing. So we do need all spectrums of housing, but it's going to take some, I think, some good innovation on all of the community partners, parts to make that happen.
Any other questions from council for Mark? Appreciate your update. It's always good to hear an update from Go Pips, so thank you.
I did not have a specific legislative update tonight. I know that's something we've had on past councils. They have not closed the session yet, so we'll have something, wait for the next one, better, final report.
Okay, thank you, Phil. The next item, was there anybody that wanted to speak on any of our agenda items tonight? We don't have any papers up here. Was there anybody that wanted to speak on any of our agenda items in tonight's city council meeting? Okay, the next thing is public hearings. We've got two public hearings.
This is the time, place, and dates set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property located four twenty-two North Wallowo to Almo Perez.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. I believe Jake, you're going to handle this.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, so this was a property that was placred in City Ticket through six fifty-seven action. This is the accepted bids on the property until two P M on March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. We received three bids. Almo Perez made the best pitch amount of seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. The staff recommends accepting that bid.
Is there a property, is there a house on this property or is it just a vacant lot?
Yeah, it is a placred house.
Does council have any questions for Jake? Since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any questions or comments they want to make relative to this piece of land? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion both. Second. Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-one, twenty twenty-five, accepting the bid and approving the disposal of four twenty-two North Wallowo, Iowa, to Almo Perez with a sum of seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number eighty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the motion.
Second.
Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and dates set for a public hearing on the proposal to convey certain real property located at one twenty-six South Cooper to Samuel Duran.
Go ahead and open the public hearing, Jake. It's all yours. Thank you, Mayor. So this is also a placred property that we received through six fifty-seven action. This is accepted bids on this property until two P M on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. We received three bids. I hope that's right.
Five, six.
We received six bids on this one. Samuel Durant submitted the best bid in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. And the staff recommended accepting this bid as well.
Council have any questions for Jake regarding this property? Since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make any comments or ask any questions regarding this property? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion both.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty-two, twenty twenty-five, accepting the bid and approving the disposal of one twenty-six South Cooper in Atonwa, Iowa, to Samuel Duran for the sum of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seven dollars. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number eighty-two, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the motion.
Second. Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Jake. The next item is ordinance, as we have one tonight.
Ordinance number thirty-two, forty-two, twenty twenty-five, establishing solid waste fees for non-commercial establishments by repealing and replacing section thirty-one and a half to thirty-five of the municipal code of the City of Atonwa, Wallowo County, Iowa. Recommendation passed the third consideration and adopt ordinance number thirty-two, forty-two, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move.
Second. Chris will take the role.
Phil. It's up to you, yeah.
No, no.
If you want to discuss it.
No, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You know, like I said, this is the, the third reading of this. What it will do is look to increase the cost. This is based on the increase in, in contract pricing, plus any additional costs for landfill tipping fees, administrative costs, fuel surcharges, et cetera. And it's looking at a dollar fifty per unit per month, or fiscal years, twenty-six, being twenty-seven. The current rate is twenty-four fifty per month and it would go up to twenty-six dollars in July one, twenty twenty-five, per month. And then again, I'm sorry, it would go up to twenty-four fifty per month on July one, twenty twenty-five, and twenty-six dollars per month on July one, twenty-six. I did pass both the readings previously.
Is there any questions council has of Phil?
So Mr. Administrator, the, this is just about, this is not about making any money. This is about just keeping the service available and breaking even as best we can on that service, right?
Correct.
Yeah, all, all costs that are collected from these fees go into the service, either through the direct contract costs. There is, what do I say, for users that receive assistance from, I believe, CETA. They get a little bit of discount, as opposed to help assist with that, cover those costs, which I think is a dollar or two, it's some of the, the terms of the agreement. And then the other surcharges, whether it's fuel or landfill tipping fees or other things that would be part of that.
Any other questions for Phil? No, Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to departmental board or commission recommendations or reports.
Historic preservation certified local government annual report. Recommendation accept certified local government annual report.
You guys take this. Yeah, I will pick it up and turn it over. So this is something that's done on an annual basis.
I need a motion to approve.
Second.
I apologize that I went off of the mayor's tree there. The Atonwa Historic Preservation Commission has completed the certified local government annual report for twenty twenty-four and is submitting the report, city council reviewed and accepted. The C L G annual report is required to be completed, submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Finance Authority to maintain certification and support preservation needs and programs. And we have Brenda Case here. Anyone else come with you?
Nope, I'm all alone.
She was recently appointed as the, the new chair for the Historic Preservation Commission. And so, you know, go through any highlights or?
Sure, I'll give it a, give it a go. The local Historic Preservation Commission is under the city planning department, which is certified by the state Historic Preservation Office in Des Moines. They in turn are under the Iowa Economic Development Authority, the National Park Service at the federal level, and the Department of Interior. So the National Park Service awards monies to SHPO, State Historic Preservation, to be used for a number of purposes. And part of that is issuing grants to local commissions. Now, in order to be eligible for a grant for historic preservation, we must be a certified local government. Atonwa is one of ninety cities in Iowa that has that designation, making Iowa a leader nationally in certified local governments. We achieved that status in nineteen ninety-one. We've been members of good standing since then. A city, in order to be a certified local government, a city has to have a historic preservation commission. That means at least three times a year. We have to comply with open meeting laws, participate in state-sponsored training. We have to demonstrate a level of preservation activity and create this annual report and have it approved by our city's governing body. So we ask you, the council, to, I hope that you had a chance to look over that and you would endorse it. Our activities, our main ones were to, we appreciate this, the historic preservation plan that you commissioned the Lakota Group to do on our behalf. That's a big thing in keeping our certification. The commission reviewed it, gave input this year. We also did, two of us went to the state Historic Preservation Summit in Washington, fulfilling the education requirement, then to raise awareness about historic preservation in Atonwa. We held a cemetery tour of the historic cemetery, Atonwa Cemetery. It was a, it was a big hit. There were a lot of people wanting to come around and have a look at the cemetery and its structures. And we had people who came out to, fully impersonators, of people who are buried there and were instrumental to the city. So that was always really fun. So we strengthened our relationship by cooperating with Atonwa community players and Haini and Puanas. We had a number of local people doing tours and that was a, that was a fun thing. That was a big hit. We had some challenges this year with the passing of Molly Nomin, who was a, she's a, an irreplaceable resource among architectural historians. And she was the previous chair and of the, Atonwa has twenty-seven properties and districts on the national register. And she authored most if not all of those nominations, as well as many in Van Buren County and as far away as, you know, Woodbury County. So she was really a peach and we've been scrambling to try to carry on. And this report, although it's late, we think it's, we think it's pretty good. And we hope that you read it and you liked it and you'll sign it off because we need to, that's what we need to submit our final copy and keep our C L G designation.
Brenda, one, one of the questions that I had when I read the, the plan is, how does the commission plan to take that historic preservation plan that the Lakota Group did? How are you going to get the public to understand what that's all about and how they can get engaged in that?
Well, we, first, we hope that they remember the chance that they had to give input before the plan was written. And then we're going to, our first goal now this year is to break down to three approachable projects that we can begin to implement. And in each one of those, we want to raise awareness of what else is in, in store. Then we have a, we're going to do the cemetery tour again. We always try to pitch our commission and the importance of history and preservation to economic development and just to follow your life and happiness. You can get a sense of belonging because your roots are here and you can look at these things. And you know, you know, my grandfather owned that building and it just, it ties us together as a people and to this place.
I, I definitely agree that Molly Nomin is going to be a hard person to replace, but I would like to take this opportunity to let the public know that we do have one seat on the Historic Preservation Commission that I need to try and get filled sometime in the next few months. So if anybody is interested in being considered to be put on the Historic Preservation Commission, you can either go on the city's website and pull off an application or you can come to my office, I give you one. And we really want to get that commission back up to its full five members sooner than later. So if anybody is really interested in working on historic preservation, I'd encourage you to fill out an application and apply because we do have that one vacancy. Does council have any questions for Brenda?
I just appreciate the work you all do. I used to sit on that commission and it was a great commission to sit on and I truly appreciate it.
So take care.
Do good work.
Thank you. So we'll just wait then for a signature thing, you probably, and update or?
Vote on this here and if it's approved, then the mayor will sign that, I'm assuming tomorrow probably, and we'll get that over to you.
Actually, I'll get it uploaded and we'll have this off the list of tickets. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Brenda.
We're going to be motion.
Yeah, the motions are going to be made.
It's on second.
You're, you did second.
No, third.
If there's no other questions for Brenda, then Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Okay, the next item is resolutions. We have eleven of those tonight, so we'll start with those.
Resolution number sixty-nine, twenty twenty-five, approving changes to the compensation handbook. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number sixty-nine, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Thank you, Brett.
Is there a second? Okay, Mark Kojo, you're up.
Thank you, sir. So this is an update to the compensation handbook, which is for our employees. I'll go through some of the different changes that are in there. First one is to add the F Y twenty-six rate table, which you did approve during the last budget. Approval last meeting, a couple meetings ago. All that does is it actually puts the chart with the two point five percent COLA on the cost of living increase. That is, the two point five percent is what was published in the Iowa League of Cities Budgeting Report, which according to our current compensation handbook, that's what our fact is. So that has already been budgeted. He did, this is just officially putting it into the handbook. We separated the rates in here for the seasonal lifeguards and seasonal customer service reps. This was done in conjunction with both the director of parks as well as our aquatic facilities manager. Looking at the two positions, lifeguards have more certifications that are needed than the customer service representatives. So if, when we look at the wages on those, those two need to be separate wages and different wages. We also added a head lifeguard as a grade one position to that. One of the things that we looked at is, we've always had head lifeguards, but there's never been a, a full structure in place with it. So what we've done is we've created a job description and posting process. And in talking with our aquatic facilities manager, we feel that this is something that is going to encourage maybe more responsible people to take those positions. It gives them just a little bit extra money, but they are performing extra duties as well. So again, it just really more struck, gives more structure to the beach. Same thing with the program supervisor. It was initially in there as a grade three. We did change it to a grade two, so it did decrease. Again, this was feedback from the department based upon what the current responsibilities are and the updated responsibilities with the job description. We felt that this better aligned with everything. The number five that's listed on there is we do have a proposal to change the rates for seasonal and contracted employees as outlined in the job analysis. So about a month ago or so, our department heads, we were talking at a meeting about needing to hire seasonal and contracted employees. And so after a review of what local rates are, just wages in general, not only from other cities, but from getting people to be able to mow for the parks or to work in the cemetery, work down at public works, we are asking to raise that seasonal contracted labor rate of a dollar both ways. So instead of fourteen, fifteen dollars, it would make it fifteen, sixteen dollars. With, we have budgeted for the previous amount in it, but in talking with the department heads, one of the things that they are willing to do is to watch what is budgeted or what is actually spent as compared to what's budgeted and make any cuts or any changes as necessary. So we feel that this is going to be able to allow us to hire and fill those seasonal positions that we have not been able to do in the past. Past couple of years, I do believe we have not been fully staffed with our seasonal contracted labor. Number six update, this was a mistake that somehow it slipped past me that the Solid Waste Commission did approve the rates for landfill and recycling center people. They had approved it back in August of twenty-two to eleven dollars an hour. Again, it's in the minutes. I just don't know how in the world. Again, it's in the minutes. I just don't know how in the world I didn't get it into the compensation handbook. And then the last thing is to add the position of Director of Community Development with Urban Planning to the chart as a grade fifteen. There is a job analysis that's in there, but I'll talk a little bit more about that position and kind of the what and why. So we've talked about it before, that any time a position comes open, we review the entire position. And when I say we, it's usually HR along with the department head. In this case, because it's a department head position, it was with the city administrator. So we sat down, we reviewed the position, Finance Director was involved in that as well. We also talked with the department about what their needs, their desires, kind of where they see the department. And we had posted the Director of Community Development position. We did make a few changes to the job description at that time, but there was not much and not enough to necessitate a change in grade. So we put together a panel of six people, I believe six or seven people to do interviews for the position. And we did have one candidate who had experiences and certificates above and beyond what we had required. We sat and reviewed it again. Again, it was the Finance Director, myself and city administrator, and identified that this could be an opportunity for us to revamp the position yet again. There is some potential interest from that candidate, even with these additional duties that we've added. So one of the things that we did is we took a look at planning. While it's been something that the Director of Community Development has done, this enhances what they will do and it also adds a requirement for, for a planning certification that was not in there previously. Also talks more about being more in charge of the overall comprehensive plan, doing some grant writing, working more with Area Fifteen and some of the other entities around town. So again, it's really enhancing the responsibilities of this position to a greater level than what it was previously. With that, we looked at it and we said, okay, based on this, adding these responsibilities, adding that certification, we needed to do a job analysis or a salary analysis to look at if that, adding those job responsibilities would increase the salary to it. And that's the analysis that you have. When we look at planner positions from around the state, you're looking anywhere from starting at about sixty thousand dollars up to a hundred thousand dollars in some communities. So just for the planner position itself, and that does not include many of the things with code compliance or some of the things that our Director of Community Development would do. So as we looked at this, we put it together, also taking into account that previously, one of the things that we have done is we've looked at our Director of Public Works and we currently have a Director of Public Works who is a certified engineer. And so we took a look at that and we actually added a position onto our compensation handbook to increase that. Not saying in the future, we're hoping Philip doesn't leave us, but when he wins the lottery and sits on an island somewhere, we may be able, we may not be able to find a Director of Public Works that has that same credential. So we've kept that Director of Public Works, but we also have a Director of Public Works with a professional engineering certification. This would be a very similar situation. So this would be adding that Director of Community Development with Urban Planning, making it a grade fifteen, but still keeping that Director of Community Development at the grade thirteen where it is and where, according to analysis, it should be. This just adds that additional responsibility to that position.
Does the council have any questions for Barb on any of these changes?
So I have a few. So I do, I understand the, like what we did with the, the city engineer or the community. But so I just have some questions about this. So if we add a planning appropriation or level. So you're talking about other responsibilities and I, so I read in here, like city liaison with ten-fifteen transit, Area Fifteen Regional Commission planning. So that was stuff under my, my understanding was stuff that was already happening. So how is that a further responsibility with the planning?
I'll defer to Phil on that. Thank you.
I don't know that we've had anybody at the ten-fifteen meetings for quite some time. And with Area Fifteen?
I drive for.
We're talking from the city. Like city representatives.
Yeah, they have a, no, sorry, they have a monthly meeting and the, to have a city representative at the, those meetings. And, and then with Area Fifteen, I believe there's a planning designation. The mayor sits on one committee and then having somebody in a planning role as well. So those ones, just solidifying that this position would be those designations as well.
So it seems like there are, there's things here that are obvious that need to be updated, but other things that are, you know, especially the last item is questionable. It seems like it's kind of a heavy one. I'm concerned that we declined a couple of positions there with the budget. So this is, this is kind of adding another position, I realize it's going under the same person of our economic development we need to fill, but this is adding more salary to that. So I'm concerned about how that looks. We passed a fiscal year budget and this would add more salary than what we put in that budget. So that's a concern to me of this last issue here.
And I guess I would also ask too, so when we look at, I think one of the things we talked, or you mentioned with like the change rates for seasonal and contracted employees and then I guess with this too. So I think with that one, we talked about like the supervisors or the department heads would watch that and what would that, so what would that process look like? Would that be like meeting with Cole on a regular basis? Like what does that process look like for us?
So with the new financial system, the nice thing is, is that we can go in at any point in time and take a look at what we have spent comparing it to what we've got budgeted. And contracted labor is its own object code. So I'm in there often and I take a look at that because we actually get the billing from our, the partner that we have in town for that. Cole has also talked a lot with our department heads in our Thursday meetings about making sure that we're monitoring those types of things. So whether it's the department heads going in there on their own, whether it's myself, whether it's Cole, whether it's Phil, any one of us will be taking a look at those things to make sure that we're, we're monitoring that, how much we've spent based on what we've got budgeted.
So it sounds like there will be some checks and balances. It won't just be all on one person to monitor it, which I appreciate. And then I'm gonna go back to that number seven. Again, I understand what, what Councilperson Rita's saying too, you know, and I think the difference is, what, thirty thousand dollar difference?
It may, I believe it's anywhere between like twenty-three to thirty thousand. Yeah, twenty-three to thirty thousand, depending upon the staff.
And I can see the value in a planner. I come from, I have planners in my family, so I understand the value of that. But then again, when I look at our budget, what is that, and maybe this is more of a Cole and Phil question. How, what does that impact to our budget when we're already watching it and already thinking about there may have to come three to six months down the road where we're making cuts? So how do we justify for the rest of our employees that we've added twenty to thirty thousand dollars to a position? Which again, I can see the value, especially we're getting grants and that kind of stuff, but you know, kind of, what does that impact look like?
Yeah, you can come up and talk about specifically what the finance is. I just wanna get a little bit, and Barb did a pretty good job of getting to where we're even talking about this tonight. This is a, it's obviously a specialized position and you have limited applicants. We had limited applicants for the position. We interviewed two that seemed very qualified on paper. One definitely stood out of those two and in fact, to the point where the interviewing panel, which was made up of some staff and some community partners, cited that the other person would be settling and it would not be a good fit necessarily for the, for the department or for the city. The first one, obviously was, has decades of experience and what they're in planning. He was looking at, is there a way to be able to afford to bring this person on to add value to what, what they can do within the department and for the city? So I think there's some real opportunity that, whether it's immediate solutions or, you know, we talked about housing with the GOPIV thing, having some creative ways to attract development. I think there's some potential there, which is why I was looking at even bringing this up in this vein to begin with. But to the, the financial part of it.
So of course, you know, the, the additional salary is not much. It, it does currently would add to the, the deficit within the general fund. However, I believe that, given some of the indications on what would be open positions in several general fund departments, that we will be able to make up that much plus a good portion, if not all, of the deficit because of those open positions. Some of them are in departments where it's difficult to get applicants, difficult to get people in, in place. So I expect those positions to probably be open for a number of months, not weeks, but months because of that. Beyond that, we, you know, we'll go into a process of monitoring, preventing updates of the council and where we're at on all the expenditures, not just the general fund. But I'm currently trying to build a, a nice worksheet so that I can go in with the information and put it into something that's readable and understandable. Because I can give you all the line items, but that doesn't really help you. You need some, some cell rates and stuff. So we'll continue to monitor that. We'll speak with the department heads. You know, and it's not just on, on budget items such as salaries or anything else like that. That, you know, we're gonna watch very closely on what all of our expenditures are. And if someone goes, because the nice thing again about this budget system is that when we run invoices and we approve them, it'll pop up and say you're over budget. So when we get to a point where we're over budget in a line item, the conversation's gonna be had with the department heads. It says, okay, where are you, where are you gonna reduce elsewhere in order to make up that deficit in that other line item? So there'll be some constant monitoring on that stuff heading across the board.
Cole, I know that you said earlier a couple of months ago that you started FY twenty-five with a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar projected deficit in the general fund, accounting a three-hundred-thousand dollar surplus because of increased revenues that weren't anticipated. Where did that basically come from? Was it all across the board or was there one or two main areas that that came from?
Well, we do have some revenues that exceeded expectations. One of the, one of those is investment income. We've been able to achieve between four and a quarter to four and a half percent through most of the fiscal year. We're down to an average right now of four-point-two-three. So we're still being able to gain that in, in that income. In other areas, yes, when we went back and, and reevaluated and reestimated the insurance costs, or not the insurance, but the employee costs, where you did the salaries, you saw that there was a tremendous reduction in expenditures that contributed to that as well.
And that was simply because of open positions?
Right, open positions, correct.
That we were trying to fill, just have not been able to fill it back.
Right. So.
So you're hoping to do something similar this coming year with a four-hundred-and-fifty thousand projected deficit?
Correct, because, because we're never fully staffed, so.
And the investments have come in better.
And the investments that come in, and some other current sources have come in better than expected as well. One of the things is, you know, we, tonight we just approved thirty-two thousand dollars in property sale, thirty-three thousand dollars in property sales. That's beyond what we, we projected, we projected twenty-five thousand dollars for property sales this year. We're now going to exceed almost a hundred thousand.
That's good. Man, first off, I wanna start saying, I know a lot of work was put into it and I can appreciate the fact that we're talking about the new position. You know, I'm all about to bank for the buck and, and I see what a very well-educated person could do. And I've been very transparent with Phil about my feelings, so I wanna be transparent with the public. I'm a little leery about spending the extra money too, and I'll tell you why, is the people we already have. Like, I mean, we're bringing somebody on, and I, I get it. I don't wanna say I don't get it because I know that, that talent could, could turn into growth. But so will, so do the people we have. I'm concerned that we'll bring somebody in, hire and, and not take care of our existing talent. And, and I'm not, I don't mean that in a cold-hearted way, if I couldn't find any other words. You know what I mean? Like I, I wanna make sure we're taking care of our existing people as well. And with a little bit of a budget deficit, but we may be doing well in some areas, but I, I just, I have some concerns.
Yeah, no, and I share yours. And looking at what staff has picked up without, and it's gonna sound like a fear attack and I don't mean to come across it way, but my conversation with individual is, not doing something like this, we will be continuing in the same situation for I don't know how long. And I understand it costs additional money to go after, I mean, but it's still, but.
If, if we're talking about someone fresh out of school with no experience and everything else, this wouldn't even be, this, that would be a nonstarter. This wouldn't even be a conversation. Talking with somebody with, like I said, decades of experience that I think could jump in from the, you know, from day one and, and start offering assistance, you know, within the department, offer assistance to senior leadership team outside the department with our community partners and that's the only reason why this is before you. I understand that, you know, looking at the additional dollars, everything else. But in this case, I, I really believe it would be worth it.
I'm about a fifty-fifty myself, 'cause I see, definitely see both sides of the, that. My main concern when I was talking with Phil about it, and I, I don't mind paying someone more if they're worth more because of education or however the, the job title goes. But on the other side of that, if you're starting somebody at the top, typically they ain't gonna stay or stick around. You know, so it, it, there's so many different scenarios on top of the situation we're in with the budget. But we can't sit around and wait for someone that don't have much education whatsoever than on the other side of that. You know, we've done, you're paying them less, well then, how far are we moving into the other areas that we need work on? So yeah, it's a coin toss to me. People are gonna like, hate me either way, so don't matter.
Well, and to your point, that's just it, is to bring a person in, they would be at the top of the current salary range with the position. This was looking at a way to, not just create a new position, but one that they could add value to with what they have. And in an area, we haven't had a planner for the last few years, so that's something we've been talking about trying to get back in under the department. This is an opportunity to kind of get the best of both worlds and at a discount than hiring two full-time positions.
Well, just to clarify too, didn't that add room for growth as well? The, the other thing that I just say too is, not only does the city would like to see getting a planner position back, one of the things that I've talked to Phil for the last few years is the, the city's in desperate need of a grant writer and this person has had some extensive experience in grant writing. So they also could end up writing some grants and hopefully bringing in additional revenue that the city doesn't get currently. So I see that's another added benefit to hiring somebody that has this extra skill set as well.
And in discussion, wasn't that gonna be part of the job description?
It is. Yeah, we added that as one of the requirements.
But I guess I would push back on that too and say, how much time is gonna be allotted for that person to write grants when they're coming in and taking over, you know, a position that was extremely busy too? And then they also have, I mean, inspections and things like that. They'll have to cover inspections and stuff too. So, I mean, again, I see the value in it too, but I think these are real questions that we have to ask. And sitting here talking, these are questions that are coming forward. So how much time is going to be truly dedicated to that? Because if we say, oh, that's in the job description, well, what does that mean? Are they gonna sit down and, you know, once a week they get, or eight hours, or ten percent of their time? Like what does that actually mean?
And then what would accountability look like if that didn't happen? So it, it is a salary position, so it's as much.
So it is a salary position, so it's as much time as it would take to get the job done. They would be assisting with inspections as needed. We do have building inspectors. They'd be able to fill in if somebody was out sick, you know, inspection was scheduled or things like that with some of their certificates. You know, right now, I'm trying to pick up some, I know Jake has picked up a ton, and I'm getting burned out.
One of the other things, and Cole brought this up, I didn't even think about it, but with the solid lease commission, meaning that we just had, we also removed the landfill and the recycling center from this position as well. With the elevation of the solid lease superintendent, what was being done previously, they, it was figured out about 10% of this position's time being spent for landfill and recycling center. That has been removed from this position, again with the elevation of the solid lease superintendent.
What's that been here, do you know?
I want to say it was like $10,000, $12,000.
For you?
Yes, yeah, what we had budgeted for FY26.
So the staff that did, I think you said there was staff that sat in on that meeting that are in the department, correct?
Yes.
What, what was their reaction to the person?
The feedback that we got from them was very favorable, and that they felt that this person had been out on, like, could speak the speak and talk the talk, walk the walk, do everything. They had been there, they had done the building inspections, they had had the conversations with the contractors. The feedback from the staff was that they could absolutely see that person in the position.
Any other questions for Phil or Bart? One more question. I know they, she has licenses on electrical inspections and stuff.
No, I was incorrect on that when you and I spoke, it's building inspections. Yeah, yeah, I was incorrect on that, I'm sorry, John.
Sorry.
She's got certifications for commercial and residential building inspections, building plans. And I believe there's another one or two that she has as well.
Did Zach have them?
Honestly, I don't know what he had, we did not have copies of those in HR.
I just have another question too. So just kind of looking at this, I mean, we're looking at it because a specific person is coming in, but it probably should have been a conversation, you know, in the past. So are there, is there a way to go through it? Again, I know that as positions come open, we're looking at them too. But is there a way to, I don't know, I know you're really busy, and I know Katie's really busy too, but to kind of look at this for next year's, you know, when we're looking at next year's budget or something too, that if we have an open position like this, we can pull it into the grade or the proposition plan?
Anytime we've got a position that we know that's coming open, we do. I mean, we've been able to look, you know, we had, we've got a retirement out of public works that we knew that was going to be happening quite a while ago. That was conversations with our public works director about, are we going to fill this position? What does it look like? What are the other options that we have? So when we know about them, absolutely, that's something that we can do. And that, as we get more into performance evaluations and succession planning, yes, that is absolutely the intent behind it. Unfortunately, a lot of times you don't know when some of those positions are going to have to come open, so.
Especially with succession planning, I think I look up and at this and I see it, you know, again, there's a benefit, but.
Well.
It's a struggle back and forth.
Yeah, and honestly, that was one of the things that was brought up, kind of looking along the lines of succession planning. You know, there was a suggestion from the applicant of, well, you could do this, like an assistant or an assistant to the city manager type thing. We've been down that path before, we knew that that didn't go well, we had a discussion last time. So looking at alternatives that would make sense with what they had, what they could offer, and might still be, you know, being able to bring them in and pay them what we could both agree to.
How does it work for this person coming in, a person, whoever this is, coming in at this grade compared to other people that have been hired? Is there any potential for there to be a conflict there, or people to feel like, well, I didn't get that opportunity or?
That's a concern, that's my biggest concern actually, is our existing, you know, because we have people that are just as talented at what they do. So that is one of my concerns. And, you know, I do want to make this transparent, because I know Mark put a lot of work into this, I built a lot of work into this, I know the committee and our unitary. And I don't know, I'm just going to say, I would say, there's four of us here tonight. And I think that merits a little bit more discussion, because, and like I said, I want to be honest. I'm probably a no on that position right now. So I don't know if you want to give a little bit more discussion until there's a full council. And the only reason I bring that up, I just want to be fair. I don't want to go clear to the end and then just surprise people, you know. But I do want to make it clear, I know Mark worked hard, Phil worked hard, the committee worked hard to scout out and find the best people. And it's nothing against the person, I know the person they're talking about, I don't know personally, I know of her, she is a talent, she is, she. So those are my concerns, and I just wanted to be open.
So what I'm hearing is you want to table that, but there's other things on.
Right, see, that's why I'm talking about it, I don't want to vote no to everything.
Well, one to six and two, well, that is what you're asking?
Right, I don't want to vote no to everything that's in the conversation, but I, I'm just talking about that specific item to get taken off. And I just wanted to be open about that to see how you want it to work.
So to answer your first question, one of the things, I know Phil, Cole and I actually spent a lot of time, is we pulled up everyone's current salaries. And we spent a lot of time talking about our current employees, where they're at, where their levels are. And I know Phil, and I mean, even China, I know he has had some of those conversations with some of the employees. But you're absolutely right, it was a concern, and it's something that we did talk about. It was one of the first things I think we talked about, was if we were to do something like this, what would the rest of our employees feel? How would they look at this? How would it be perceived?
Is there any way we can vote on one through six and tables of it?
Well, that was my question, just to make sure, I mean, if we need to amend the motion.
Yeah, you have to amend the motion that you've heard me out.
The only thing I'd say is if you do that, you might run the risk of being able to hire this person, because she's been waiting for an answer. So that's the downside of tabling it, is you might end up losing that opportunity to hire this person. So.
Just one last question, how long was this all open for? Take this for a second.
We posted it, we posted it and said that we would do the first round of interviews 10 days after, which is in accordance with our hiring policy. Do you remember what date that was?
I don't, but it's still open.
It's still, yeah, it's still open and on the jobs, on the website.
We received one additional application since the first round of interviews. Questionable, I mean, I think they need the minimum qualifications, but like I said, we had two last time. One, I'd say hit it out of the park, and one did not. You don't know what you're going to get with what's on paper, so. Yeah, I would say to the mayor's point, I think we lose the candidate, and if, that's just the reality of it.
I care, I want to say it's been posted for like three days total. I want to, I want to say it was like the second or third week in April, or no, it was the end of March, I thought. I think it was the end of March is when we actually posted it.
There's not a way to like go over here, just say, okay, we're going to hire you at one rate, and then you meet these deliverables, and then we can move up to that?
One of the things we've talked about, and we've done this in other positions, is that I, I myself was one of them that brought in, we'll bring you in at this rate in six months, once this is completed, then this, you come at this rate. Yes, that, that is done, and it's, we've done it with a number of different positions within the city. If we were to keep it at that grade 13, you would not have that opportunity to do that, because that person would be at that top. Either at the top or very near the top, and so there's not that movement that would be there.
Well, but you could stair-step, the pay increases over time, depending on how some of those deliverables got it changed.
Yeah, and we've done it, like you said, we've done it with a number of different supervisory positions, where supervisor, like department heads, or have come up with, say, two to three different goals, and they do a six-month check-in, and okay, once you've completed those goals, then you would see an increase in a set.
Would that be something we could talk to her about?
I think Phil had planned.
I mean, I had the conversations, and that's where the issue was with where the position is at the current 13. There is no room for movement beyond that. I mean.
Well. What she's. They'll need to vote separately.
Yeah, what she's willing to be able to take the position for is at the edge of the current range. And if that's the minimum, then stair-stepping it, going lower to get to that minimum, isn't going to work. But if there's a wider range, then that becomes a little, you know, more of an option.
So we have a motion on the floor that we need to go ahead and vote on, or does the council want to change it?
I think we need to vote separate, because if someone votes no, they're not voting for no one through six.
The motion that's currently on the floor is to approve all seven. So you either need to vote that up or down, or change it now.
Yeah, you have to amend the motion.
Yeah, you'd have to amend the motion. So what does the council want to do?
I'd like it separated, whoever made the motion, if they want to amend it, I can't.
You made the motion.
Oh, so I need to amend it?
And the second to go.
Okay, well then I guess I can move to amend the motion to vote one through six and then seven is up.
Six.
Sorry.
Everybody understand what you're voting on?
We're voting to separate it up, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so Chris will take the role.
Okay, so this one's going to be to amend the motion, just want to make sure everybody knows what they're voting on. Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
So now we need a motion and a second to approve position for numbers one through six.
No, 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 you've already made that motion and amended it.
Yeah.
So now you can vote on the original motion, of one, which is, which now amended is one through six.
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll take a second one for position number seven.
Thanks, Cole.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Yeah, we need a motion for number seven. So move. It's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Good.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Christine, you need a review of any paperwork or anything?
Thank you.
Resolution number 702025, setting May 20th, 2025 as the date for a public hearing on the amendment to fiscal year 2025 budget. Recommendation passed in the document, resolution number 702025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Motion to approve.
Second.
Hey, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the voting process, staff reassessed revenues and expenditures for the current fiscal year based upon year-to-date information. Doing so allows a better estimate on ending and beginning balances for the next fiscal year, and helps to make new estimates more accurate. To finish the process, the reestimates are codified in the budget amendment. The amendment for fiscal year 2025 is ready for approval. Prior to approval, the public hearing must be held, and staff will recommend it, May 20th, 2025, at 5:30 p.m. In the budget document I sent out to you, when you give it to the line item detail, there is a column that has the reestimates for fiscal year 25. Those are what we use to come up with the budget amendment with some changes, because the estimates by department heads were made with five to six months' worth of data at year-to-date current. Went back through, reviewed, make sure that we were still on track on expenditures. So there were some adjustments up, some adjustments down, depending on where they were at year-to-date as of April.
So what do those reestimates look like? You talked about there being about $300,000 in the general fund.
Well, we're still on, we're still on track for that. Depending on where we end up with actual expenditures at the, at the end of fiscal year, we could be able to more, we could be able to less on that. But we're still on track for a surplus at the end of year.
Any other questions for Cole? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number 712025, approving submission of application for an Iowa airport improvement program, certifying eligibility requirements. Recommendation passed in the document, resolution number 712025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, JB. Thank you, Mayor Council. The official title of this, the grant application is for a taxi lane rehabilitation. It's going to be around our area where we have existing taxiways, and we'll, in the near future, we'll have the new taxi, the T-hangers built also. So normally, this is a $300,000 grant application we do. I was encouraged at the conference this year to make this a $400,000 grant application. Right now, pavement is a high priority, as it always has been, right now more than any. And with the, the bids we just got in on our last pavement project that we'll hopefully get to award in July, the cost of getting concrete work done has come down. So as crazy as that sounds, the price is relatively, it's going up, you can get a lot much worth of it done for your dollars. So I'm just asking for your permission to submit the IBDOT, so.
And this is an 85%?
This is an 85-15 match, so we're going to apply for, obviously, the most we can, the 85%. So the estimated cost is roughly $468,000. Our cost is going to be right around $70,000. And the IBDOT would be close to $400,000, I'll look, they'll match up too, so. The other projects we do with the FAA right now are 95-5 match, it's good for two years, we know, so. Like I said, the last bids came in way under what we estimated, so.
Council, any questions for JD?
You told me this, but which happens first, T-hangers or this pavement, concrete?
It just depends on how it goes now. The other pavement, the FAA stuff that we've already approved to do, and we put bids out for, that's got to be started before we can start the T-hanger project, because we are going to use some federal funds towards that. Just a rough amount right now, it looks like we've got about $413,000 in federal funds left over that we're not going to use for the pavement project with the FAA's funding. And in October 1st, we'll also get another $258,000 of, 150,000 entitled money and 108,000 bill money. So 258,000 on top of what we already have, so that's going to help us get the full amount, hopefully, the six T-hangers we're shooting for. Depends how the bid's coming, it could be eight. So, I mean, worth the mercy right now. We're going to, we're going to bid that project, the T-hanger project, the next three or four weeks. But this would definitely be a fiscal year 26 project, design and survey will get started this fall. And hopefully, we can tie it all into the same bidder we'd get, then might be one big project for both federally and state-funded project.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council for JD?
I appreciate when he comes and brings his friend Charlie, send him to some.
Okay, if there's no other questions, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway? Yes. Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number 722025, approving minimum assessment agreements related to the amended and restated Atumwatt Urban Revitalization Plan for the Atumwatt Urban Revitalization Area. Recommendation passed in the document, resolution number 722025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the January 21st, 2025 regular meeting, the City Council approved three commercial tax amendments as follows. SMD LLC, a 100 by 106 shipping-receiving building with an estimated cost of $1.3 million. P and M Properties. P and M Properties, new building with an estimated cost of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Atumwa Mini Storage, six units, forty by one hundred, or six, forty by one hundred buildings, estimated cost of four hundred and fifty thousand. House File seven eighteen requires minimum assessment agreements to be executed for the abatements. Resolution approves the abatements for each property with minimum assessments as follows. S N D LLC, one million dollars before rollback. P and M Properties, four hundred and twenty thousand before rollback. Atumwa Mini Storage, eight hundred thousand before rollback. The assessed valuation from the Waukaw County Assessor for all three properties already exceeded the minimum assessments.
So is the commercial tax abatement they get is the difference then?
So the way it works is whatever their value, the value of the property was at this point, they get an abatement on the valuation that they created.
Okay.
For, for whatever reason, legislature, House File seven eighteen, for these redevelopment districts, they put in the minimum assessment. Our best guess is they meant it for the urban renewal areas, which were TIF. We've never had minimum assessments for the tax abatements. There haven't been minimum assessments for tax annual financing.
Because more than likely, your new buildings are always been exceeding minimum assessments.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, we were lucky on, on, on these because the assessor, what happened was we didn't get the, the minimum assessment agreements filed before the assessments were made. When the assessor contacted myself, he stated that if we had these in before June, that they would then get the, the tax payment. Without the minimum assessment agreements, they would not get the payments.
Council, any questions for Cole on this particular item? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number seventy-three twenty twenty five, authorizing the mayor to execute one permanent sewer easement for six oh five East Ford Street for construction of public improvements for the Blanks Branch Phase Eight Division Three Sewer Separation Project. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number seventy-three twenty twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Philip.
Thank you, Mayor. So in order to construct and maintain parts of the Phase Eight Division Three Sewer Separation Project, the attached easement is required. Staff is met and works as property owner, explaining in detail defined improvements. Sewer easement remain in place for perpetuity and allow for future maintenance and upkeep of the utility infrastructure. So this wasn't part of the first group because we had trouble finding one of the owners, but that issue got taken care of, so. And this is the last of the first group of easements that we needed to get. We'll have more easements for future parts of that project. This is the last one for the first, the section I'm working on now. Will that end, well, I'm gonna break to you later on in the council meeting.
Any questions for Philip regarding this particular item?
Obviously, the landowners acceptable with this.
Yeah, we have like a, kind of a set price. We pay the past year or so for easements and we just offer them that, that.
Hundred dollars?
Price, yeah, it's like a dollar of square foot, but this was below the hundred square foot amount, so we, we have minimum hundred bucks that we offer. So it's not a gift or anything. It's we pay for it.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number seventy-four twenty twenty five, upgrading change order number four for the Atumwa Cemetery Office and Maintenance Building Project. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number seventy-four twenty twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Gene.
Thank you, Your Honor. On February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, the City of Atumwa entered into a contract with R G Construction of Atumwa for one point five two million dollars to build a new office and maintenance building in Atumwa Cemetery. Change order number four is to remove native clay soil from the building site and replace with better quality fill material that is more suitable for constructing a concrete slab and building on. The cost of change order number four is twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents, which will increase the contract amount of the project to one million, five hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. Change orders number one, two, and three were for a total cost of three thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-two cents, which did not require city council approval. There was one point eight seven five million dollars budgeted for this project in the current council improvement program.
Gene, the question that I had, was there any thought given early on before the R F P went out to require soil borings or anything to see what the quality of the soil was before they started excavating?
We had TerraCon do soil testing on the site about eight years ago, and I forwarded the results to the project manager, Paul Newman, before this project started. But after the top soil was cut off and pushed off to the east is when they discovered that this clay was not suitable. And it was holding wire and it wasn't pretty.
Any other questions from council for?
Yes, it has to be done. You can't build on this material, so.
Correct.
It has to be taken care of.
Well, it's still way under budget, too.
Yeah. Any other questions from council for Gene? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thanks, Gene.
Resolution number seventy-five twenty twenty five, re-inhearing protection policy for City of Atumwa employees. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number seventy-five twenty twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Second. Okay, Barb.
Thank you, sir. So this is a hearing protection policy that has been reviewed, drafted, and reviewed by our safety committee as well as our department heads. This is one of the first policies that we looked at. We have a very, very thick health and safety manual that we have found that has not been updated in probably, we're thinking fifteen to twenty years, so. Hearing protection is one of the first things that, that the safety committee has cited that we want to tackle. And so this policy takes some of our old things and incorporates some new things. There was a lot of feedback, like I said, from not only department heads, but our safety committee as well. The, the last appendix item, like the positions, that was all based on feedback. Essentially, by passing this tonight, what we will then do is we will start getting scheduling for annual hearing tests. We currently do pre-employment ones, but we will get back into doing the annual ones, and that's what this policy will kind of kick in motion for us.
Are those done in-house or do you contract with somebody to do those hearing tests?
So we do the, they're not done in-house. We have to go out to do them. For pre-employment ones, we utilize occupational health. Right now, their machine is broken, so, and they do not have a timetable as to when that will be fixed. So asking around to other cities, getting quotes from other companies, and given the number of employees that we're going to need to get that baseline testing for, we are going to look at getting a boss to come in. There's different companies that have like a big mobile van boss that'll come in, and we'll get it down to public work since that's where we have a large number of employees that will need it, as well as possibly the recycling center or water pollution control. And that way, we can try and get as many employees done as we possibly can without having to send them out to O C Health and schedule it whenever they get their machine up and running.
I just thought it was interesting that police don't have to have the hearing test.
Now, we, we wear hearing techs on the red rings, so.
And there's different, with police and fire.
I mean, somewhat positions.
There's also different testing that we have with M F P R S I that they do as well through Union Point and other places, so.
Council, have any questions for Barb regarding this hearing protection policy?
What will this cost the city? What kind of cost are we talking about?
So as far as the hearing test, we believe, oh, David, you got me on the spot. I have it, I just don't remember. I wanna say it's somewhere around three thousand to three thousand dollars. It's not much.
I mean, I think it's important that.
Yes.
But.
And we do have funds budgeted out of our risk management fund for doing some of these things. And again, as we move forward to some of the different trainings and things like that, we're gonna be able to do a better job of budgeting for all of these different types of programs that we have. But I wanna say total for, I'm gonna say it was around three thousand dollars. Thank you.
You know, my two-second opinion, I'm glad you were implementing this hearing, is actually one of those under-values. And I mean, there's a lot of companies that don't, yeah, that don't test, so I'm glad we're taking it serious and setting the baseline. Not only is it good and healthy for, for staff, it's, it protects everybody involved, so I, I actually really like this that we're taking, that this is being updated.
That's why it's so important for you to talk in your.
Here, there can hear.
Either can I.
Any other questions for Barb? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
And Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution number seventy-six twenty twenty five, approving the city's wellness program. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number seventy-six twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, Barb.
Thank you, sir. So this is to really more formalize what we already currently have and are doing and putting this into a bonus program policy. We currently have our E A P that already passed out a couple of years ago that is in our personnel policy. One thing that, the first couple of things that's on here is the health, the health screenings and the flu shots. It's something that has come to council every single year and we have asked you to approve it. What we would want to do by putting it into this policy is that we are committed to doing this for our employees. We did take some time with the employee advocacy group and reviewed our current program with the health screenings, and we actually did review some different types of programs and different fitness and wellness, different programs that were out there. And the team has decided that they want to keep this Healthy Choices program. And again, this is employee-led group, and we have employees from many different departments, different levels that are in there. But they are choosing, they want to keep our Healthy Choices program, which is a free blood draw for them. And it is also lets you look at your results, kind of work with a coach through, again, it's through the hospital to make plans or different things like that to try and get their, get your numbers down or keep yourself healthy. And then the flu shots are also something that's free for our employees that we do every year as well. So again, these are programs that we currently do, but this is all just putting it and formalizing it into one specific policy. For the health screenings, we do currently budget that out of our benefit fund, and we do have twelve thousand dollars every year that we have budgeted for that. We may look to increase that the next, not F Y twenty-six, but possibly F Y twenty-seven, just simply because, of course, costs have gone up, but that twelve thousand dollars is the one that has been budgeted for so many years out of that account. But there is, there are money that's there. One of the things with the, the health screenings and the employee advocacy group has talked about it, that we want to reevaluate this next year. They have asked to be given a chance to really kind of promote this and get it out there to our employees and really talk it up to get our employees to participate. And then once we get through it, we'll take a look at it, evaluate it, see if it's something we want to continue with, or if there is a, a change in direction that the team would like to go.
One of the things that I was glad to see that the city has made a commitment to on their E A P program to make that fairly inclusive, to not only involve the employee, but also spouse and children if needed.
Yes.
A lot of employers don't do that. They just focus on employee and that's it.
It can be anybody that lives in your home, so, you know, if you've got an elderly parent that lives in your home with you, they can utilize that as well.
Like, that's great. Council, have any questions for Barb regarding this item? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Resolution number seventy-seven twenty twenty five, awarding a Washington Street reconstruction project to D C Concrete and Construction of Dowd, Iowa in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number seventy-seven twenty twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Cause said you'd be back. Here you go, Philip.
Thank you. So this, the bids were received and opened by the City of Atumwa on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five at two P M. Four bids were received. The low bidder was D C Concrete Construction of Dowd, Iowa in the amount of seventy-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars. And our estimate was seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, so this came in fifty-six thousand, lowly estimate, which is actually a pretty aggressive estimate because those are based on prices we got earlier this winter and last fall that were already lower than we were used to with earlier. So prices are still, like J D said, they're still, still being. Them rose. They're, they're still going up a little bit. Of this seventy-two thousand roughly, there's waterworks funded, so that's at least about six hundred and sixty-seven thousand for the city it comes up on.
Council, have any questions for Philip regarding this project?
I guess I just have one.
What?
I did drag up there, so maybe it's obvious, but why is that one hundred feet not being done? You said one hundred feet north of the fifth street.
The portion north of Fifth Street was done several years ago, so it's already new. We're just going a little bit into the new stuff, actually, in order to separate some sewer.
Yeah, if I'd have driven up there, I'd very much see.
Any other questions for Philip? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number seventy-nine twenty twenty five, approving change order number one and accepting the law is finally complete for the Church Street Crosswalks project. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number seventy-nine twenty twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Motion to approve? Second.
All right, we'll start talking and hopefully there's pictures up there and they're done. So this project installed A P E ramps at Ransum, Davis, and Moore Street where they cross church. There was a change order that considers quantity adjustments. And counts, they were for lengthening ramps to meet A D requirements, replacing some stained concrete between the ramps to the back of curve. Then there was a street patch at Moore Street. D C Concrete Construction has completed the above referenced project according to plans and specs. This will authorize approval of change order number one with final payment, releasing all retainers. So the original contract amounts thirty-eight thousand, thirty-six thousand, eight twenty and fifty cents. Change orders for seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents for a new contract amount of forty-three thousand, nine thirty-four and eighty-six cents. Hey, while he's getting that, can I ask a question? Yes. Hey, I know I'm gonna sound like an idiot. When you say lengthening, was the work already complete and it wasn't done correctly? Or that was in the plan that we had? Well, one of the pictures you'll see, like, we did an A D ramp across Church Street, but to get the ramp to tie into the rest of the sidewalk, we had to get into a ramp that was crossing, I believe it was at Davis, so it was crossing Davis going north. And that one wasn't A D A compliant. It was when they put it in fifteen years ago, but.
So it really wasn't a correction.
They changed the rules. So we had to redo it to today's A D A standards, so. And then we did two ramps there instead of just one, or three ramps instead of two, I guess, however you look at it. Well, we can't look at it right at the moment.
I do think the crosswalks look very good, though.
It makes it very visible where people are supposed to cross, cross the street. Hopefully, it's gonna slow down some of the.
Drashing.
Church Charles picture. It was just a couple aerial photographs, especially the intersections. I was gonna show you what they look like, so you know what you're getting for your money, but.
I'm trying. They think it's the key.
Blame it on Ridge here. We're good. If you want to vote on, I got one more picture to show you for the next one, so if it's up by then, you can see all at once, or. My question was actually answered, so if you guys are good.
Any other questions for Philip? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Resolution number eighty twenty twenty five, setting the date for a public hearing on the proposal to convey interest in real property to the Atumwa Community School District via a real estate exchange agreement. Recommendation passed in adopt resolution number eighty twenty twenty five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, Philip.
All right, thank you, Mayor. You guys will work the ranch real quick. So this is more in Church Street. We had to go patch out into the street. That's where a lot of the overrun for pavement came from. The pavement wasn't. Um, the pavement wasn't ADA compliant again, so we had to make it so it's a smooth transition all the way across the street. Next one. Going south, uh, this is Davis. I didn't see, we had to redo the ramp going across Davis Street as well. The crosswalk was still perfectly in shape, the, the ramp, the, the panels weren't compliant, they didn't step all the way across the sidewalks. We had, since we were touching it and getting into it, when we tied our ramp going across Church Street in there, the, the sidewalk, once you, once you touch it, you're required to upgrade it, so we decided, since we're there, we'll, we'll make it so that, um, it's ADA compliant as well. And then the last ones, the cross Francis Street, that was, that one went fine, so.
And those crosswalks are some kind of embedded brick or paper, right?
Stamped concrete.
Oh, it's stamped concrete, okay, so it won't be any problem if they wildly smell in the winter.
No, no, it's stamped down, so it doesn't. Okay, so back to the real estate exchange agreement. Uh, this is a real estate exchange agreement with the Atumwa Community School District, whereas the city will convey certain property to the district in exchange for, um, the district conveying sewer easements to us. And it didn't. The overlays didn't show up. I had a outline on there, I thought that was, some reason it's not showing up. Is there some where you turned off comments on there? Like on the, on the properties of the, yeah. Anyway, I don't know if you can tell, but there's an alleyway that goes right down the middle of the, uh, tennis courts that the city still owns.
Okay.
Um, so that, if you go left and then just go up a little bit, up into your left, there's a tri- there's an alley next to the lot twenty that the school owns as well. And then there's a triangular piece of property in that corner that's just not needed for anything. And then just to the right of the, uh, and you'll get a lot more detail on this during the public hearing. This is to kind of give you a heads up on what you'll be seeing in the next council meeting. If you zoom in just to the right of the, uh, of the tennis courts, there's a, there's a small alley right there between lots twenty-five and, I believe, twenty-six. Uh, we'll convey that to the school as well. And in exchange, if you've ever been down there between, on Center Street lately, you'll see the huge trench going, uh, going across from Hackberry to, uh, to Center Street. Uh, they're gonna give us an easement across their, the lots they own for us to be able to maintain that sewer, so. Um, it just took a long time to get all the legal stuff worked out, so they've already occupied the stuff, they're gonna help, we're already working on the stuff we're gonna get from them, but it's just formalizing all the, the handshake agreements we have. And it's not gonna be any cost to the city, it's just a, we're exchanging property, they're gonna seize, it's just gonna be no, no money changing hands. But the public hearing will be next week, and I'll have a lot more detail on what's being conveyed to us and what's being conveyed to them, it's just setting a date.
Any questions for Phillip? Not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next item is public forum, was there anybody who wanted to speak on any knowledge items tonight? Okay, if not, the next thing would be Mayor, City Council Reports and Communications. I guess I would just like to mention that this week is National City Clerk Recognition Week, and I would like to, uh, call out our excellent city clerk, Chris Reinhardt.
Yeah.
She does an excellent job. They're not only on stage, she's a city council, the city administrator. She's always very pleasant and does a lot of work in getting the board packets and stuff ready for council meetings. She'll do about anything you ask her to, as long as it's work-related. And, uh, she's just been a big asset to me, and I just really want to let Chris know how much we really appreciate you.
I, I feel that, thank you.
I got a couple things, I know one I want to add on, Chris. When I became a council member, you took me under your wing, you really got me straight, and I appreciate that. Uh, my second shout-out is it's also Correctional Officer, uh, Week, so, you know, I want to give a big shout-out to the correctional officers. Those are the officers that, you know, run the, run the jails and, um, I, I don't think they often get forgotten, they just sometimes don't get mentioned and, and that what an asset they are to, to the communities they serve and to the employers. Um, they have a, a very hard job and a very different set of tasks, so, uh, if you see any of your correctional officers, make sure you tell them happy correctional officer.
And I guess I would be remiss if I also didn't say Sherry Jones, your assistant, is also very helpful, uh, when needed. I mean, she's come, took minutes a few times when you hadn't been able to be here, so. A shout-out to Sherry Jones, too, because she's always very helpful and pleasant to work with as well, so you can contribute that to her.
I just have a few things for you. Those of you that say nothing is happening in Atumwa, or doesn't, um, this weekend is full of things. So first off, Main Street Atumwa is doing Upstairs Downtown on Saturday from ten to two. Um, it's a time where you can, um, go and see different buildings. City Hall is actually going to be featured on this. Um, tickets are fifteen dollars, and, um, I know that they can be bought at Wallingdale Park, because that's where I'll be selling tickets, I don't remember where else. That's it? That's it, it's okay. Uh, also, lemonade days is, uh, this weekend, so come to Upstairs Downtown or, and then also go see the little entrepreneurs throughout town, um, and buy some lemonade. And then also Spring Dump Day, I don't know what it's called. Spring Dump Day, though?
Clean up.
Oh, clean up, that sounds good.
Spring Day sounds good.
Will be, um, Saturday from seven to ten, and that is where?
Uh, to the, uh, the parking lot of, what do you call it, the I- I drove parking lot, yeah.
Perfect, okay. And then, um, the last thing I want to say, um, actually, Officer Murphy's right back there, too, so I'm gonna give Officer Murphy a pretty big shout-out. So my daughter, um, graduated DARE this past week, and, um, Officer Murphy did that, uh, presentation, but for the last, I don't know how long it's been, my daughter comes home every day excited to talk about DARE, also to tell me what she learned and, um, tell me that I know nothing, um, about drugs. Um, which, okay, and so, um, but to see how excited the kids were, um, how supportive the parents were of this program and the teachers, um, that were there to support, um, the kids with DARE, but I mean, at the heart of it all was Officer Murphy and is Officer Murphy, and, um, it's just, it was an amazing, um, presentation. It was great to see the joy and the happiness and, um, the emotion from Officer Murphy, and, um, I just wanted to give him a huge shout-out because it's well-deserved and the kids appreciated it so much, and.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's what I got.
Anybody else have any other communications or announcements they'd like to make to the public?
Note one more thing, just if you see those kids from Gateway, make sure you appreciate it, they did an outstanding.
Yeah. It's an amazing school. Anybody else have any last comments?
If not, uh, entertain motion to adjourn. Someone?
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for coming to tonight's city council meeting. Have safe travels home.